Good morning, everyone. We will call to order the Board of County Commissions meeting for May 15th. And we will start by asking Mike, now that you're seated, would you please lead us in the prayer? Mike Clark, yes.
A pledge.
I mean, a pledge. I keep saying the prayer. What's wrong with me?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. I should call you Mr. Clark, not Mike, I guess, huh? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Certainly. Marsha Burke Bigler, Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung, Vice Chair.
Present.
Bob Lucy is absent. Vaughn Hartung.
Here.
Jeanne Herman. County Manager, John Slaughter.
Present.
Deputy District Attorney, David Watts Viall.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a call, Madam Chair.
And we would put on the record also that Commissioner...
Lucy.
Lucy. Sorry. It's been one of those mornings. Commissioner Lucy is actually on business in DC for the county, and so that is why he is absent today. So, Mr. Manager, new employees.
Yes, Madam Chair. Item three is our introduction of new Washoe County employees. So, the Commission will come down to greet the employees, and they will come down and introduce themselves. So, as soon as the Commission gets down there, we will start.
So, name and title.
Yes, if you could, when you come up, give us your name, your title, the title, department, anything else you want to share with us.
I work for CSD. I'm a Building Operations Project Manager.
Hi, Christine Chavez. I'm a Family Support Specialist with the District Attorney's Office.
Irene Mendez, also a Family Support Specialist at the District Attorney's Office.
Hello, my name is Yvonne Strickland, and I'm a Deputy Recorder in the Recorder's Office.
Good morning. I'm Sharon Ruff. I'm an Administrative Secretary for Technology Services.
I'm Nicole Sykes, and I am a Public Safety Dispatcher with the Sheriff's Office.
My name is Matthew Ellis with the Human Resources Department. I'm a HR Specialist in the Learning Center.
My name's Nana Huang. I'm the Account Clerk in the Treasurer's Office.
My name's Dylan Minnies. I'm an Engineer with the Community Services Division.
Welcome, everybody who are new employees. I'm really glad you're all here with us today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next item is our recognition of our employees who have completed certificates in our Excellence in Public Service Program. Washoe County encourages lifelong learning and the professional development of all employees. This program is administered by the Human Resources Department. Our Excellence in Public Service is a series of certificate programs designed to support employee development and performance. The completion of the courses over two years demonstrates the employee's commitment to continuous personal and professional improvement and to Washoe County's journey of excellence. And today, we are very pleased to recognize that commitment. And we start with Richard Dalton, and if Richard could come down. Office Assistant Three for the Assessor's Office, and Richard has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Congratulations, Richard. Next is Anita Eaton, who is an Appraisal Support Specialist for the Assessor's Office, and Anita has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program as well. Congratulations. She's not here. Okay. We'll make sure we get that certificate to her. Her department director's here. Next is Tan Nguyen, Library Assistant Two for the Library, and Tan has completed the Promote Yourself Mini Certificate Program. Next is Julie Poholke, Human Resources Analyst for the Human Resources Department, and Julie has completed the Essentials of Personal Effectiveness Certificate Program.
Good, you brought your own cheering squad.
Yes. And then, next is Barbara Stacy, Principal Account Clerk for the Community Service Department. Barbara has completed the Essentials of SAP for Financial Staff Certificate Program. It's one of our newer programs, and it's really a great one. Congratulations, Barbara.
Thank you.
And again, as always, we like to recognize our employees that complete these programs, but also their supervisors, their managers, their department director, because it is a time commitment.
Yes.
It seems like we give out a certificate and that's it, but this represents hours of work to get to this point. So, congratulations to everyone.
Congratulations and welcome. Glad you're all here. So, Mr. Manager, we're moving on to five.
We are. Item five. As a very special item, this is the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's 2018 Lifesavers Public Service Award, awarded to Washoe County's SOBER-24 Program for its commitment to eliminating drunk and drug impaired driving in Nevada. And I would ask all of the staff from, that are here, from the Alternative Sentencing Department to step up. Chief Joe Ingraham is ill today. He's sick today, so he couldn't be here on this occasion. But just as a way of introduction, I was very fortunate to attend the presentation of this award in San Antonio with Chief Joe Ingraham. We were one of ten jurisdictions in the nation. This is not something that we apply for, it's something that they select us for. They look out to programs of merit and invite you to receive the award. So, if you want to say a few words, want to say a little bit about the program? So, SOBER-24, as everyone knows, is our drug and alcohol testing program, and what, a number of things that the Highway Traffic Safety Administration noticed about this program was its success. The reduction last year in DUI deaths in Washoe County was significant. The number was...
That's great.
Seventy?
Seventy percent.
Seventy-seven percent reduction...
Wow.
...in DUI deaths...
Good job.
...in Washoe County last year. And the transferability of this program to other communities is really what the Highway Traffic Safety Administration is recognizing, that we've started something here that other communities really need to pay attention to and to begin in their communities. So, congratulations to everyone involved with SOBER-24. It's just a wonderful program.
Yeah, great job, guys. Do you mind having a picture with us?
Everybody wants to stand up here. Everybody look to me right here. And then, three, two. Good. Thanks.
Congratulations. Great job, guys. It's good this way, so we're... Right here.
You guys, you're good right there.
Okay. That's really fun.
Good right there. Everybody look to me right here. Here we go. And then, three, two. Good. Thanks.
Congratulations. Great job. Congratulations. I hope that nobody wants to see me. Sorry. Thank you. I have to tell you, I think you're... Anybody's. They're all the same. Okay. Great. Congratulations. Wonderful honor, and thank you very much for all the good things you guys are doing for us. Appreciate it. Mr. Manager.
Next item is item six. This is public comment. Comment heard in this item is limited to three minutes per person, may pertain to matters both on and off the Commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person, and comments are to be made to the Commission as a whole.
Thank you. I have a list of people. We'll start with Ms. Tammy Holtstill.
The water's still there. I'm still here, for the record. Let's start off with your buyout plan that you have going. Tracy Hall put it out on the news on last Thursday with Terry, talking about the fact that she will not be accepting that buyout because of the value that the home was estimated and underestimated at. I have recommended to her that she should take what you guys have stated the value is, compare it to what it was for the last 10 years, and then ask for a refund, because it's way undervalued from what she was paying taxes on. So, your buyout plan, not working. I said it wouldn't work, and it didn't. Then you add what Terry did this last week with, or yesterday, actually, with the land spill. How can you sit there and try and develop more area when you haven't taken care of the area that you've already got? You haven't taken care of the people that you've already got, and you want to add more people to the situation? Common sense, I don't think it's up there, because you're definitely not keeping your staff in line and being the guiding light that I showed you last week in your NRSs. If you were following your NRSs, which you should be doing, I know I did when I was a state employee, then you would not be allowing development to go the way it's going. You wouldn't be doing things like injecting water into aquifers and overcharging the aquifers when you know that it's going to hurt residents. Golden Valley is a good example. Why are people pumping out underneath their homes right now, thousands of gallons a day? Can anybody explain that? I know Dr. H2O should know something about it. So, that's my issues, and that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Danny Kleas.
Danny Kleas, for the record. Good thing this is election year. Maybe we'll get rid of a couple of you. Public opinion, not too high. Really good. Two of you guys last week flip-flopped. Oh, maybe we shouldn't build around a closed basin. Hmm, that's not a good idea now. But yet, you guys approved building. That's nice, around that closed basin. Here's another thing. Couple weeks, couple meetings ago, I should say, we had an appeal. That appeal was denied because of the 500-foot standing. I want to know where it is in the Washoe County Code that you have to have 500 feet to be, to prove that you have standing? Because everybody goes to the Clark County lawsuit and says, "Well, that's it. Why don't we go to Fritz versus Washoe County?" Didn't have to have it there. Hmm, what's the problem? You got Commissioner Hartung playing videos. That's really nice. That just shows what a, what a Commissioner he is.
Mr. Kleas, please do not cast...
Well, look what he's doing. That's rude as hell. Hopefully, when it comes your time, you'll be gone too. I hope it's gone.
Excuse me? We're out of line here.
Now we know. Commissioners here, there's only one up here that's for the people of Washoe County. Everybody else has another agenda. Last Commissioner meeting, speeding on Mount Rose Highway. There's a Commissioner here that drives a SUV, come hauling butt around us after leaving a meeting on Terminal. Then when she got to the stoplight, sat there. When she left, hauling butt again. Now, if you're going to preach to the choir, might as well follow your own rules. Tired of it. You guys have the best engineers. How come that lake's not fixed? That comes out of your guys' mouths all the time. Yet, it's funny to Mr. Hartung. That's not nice.
Mr. Kleas, please do not speak to the entire Commission, not particularly.
Oh, it is. But when you have a Commission, when you have a Commission that doesn't pay attention, thinks it's all funny that residents don't matter, it's really good. And guess what?
Thank you, Mr. Kleas.
Social media is great.
Next is Ms. Catherine Snedeker.
Good morning. For the record, I'm Catherine Snedeker, a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman, human being. That means that in the beginning of your Development Code, where it says this code applies to all persons, doesn't apply to me. I've been telling you my status for over 15 years. Nobody's ever challenged me and said, "No, you're not." And I like that, because you acquiesced and you agree that I'm a natural woman, human being, and not a person. Thank you. On the Agenda item, not sure the number, about how all of a sudden you're attacking warm springs again. I'd like to know what my benefit is going to be from these further commercial restrictions you're putting on everybody out there. Oh, wait, you're acting in a proprietary capacity for personal gain for the county. That's what you're doing. You're not acting on behalf of the people. You don't even care about the people. And the three of you there have no business bullying us like you do, because you want us now to come and pay for permission to do something we can already do on our properties. We're an agricultural area. We are not residential. We do not live in a subdivision. We live in a land development. They are not for you to control. The statutes, which you conveniently just pretend don't even apply to you, and your counsel remains mute when you do these things, because he knows, that's fraud. Actually, it's a racket, because you're all up there engaging in enterprise for private gain. The corporation of Washoe County is getting private gain. Your seal up there says, "State of Nevada, NRS 40.030," is a corporation. That's why you get sued, because you've reduced yourself from a government to a person liable to suit. And I think I'll just stand here and wait till the clock runs out, since you're so anxious to make me sit down. It's going to hurt when it happens.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Robert Greenhall. Did I pronounce that correctly, please?
It's Green Hall, like you're walking down the hall.
Green Hall. Thank you. Put it on the screen, right down, the little lighter spot there on the thing, right there. Put it right on that. There you go.
For the record, my name is Robert Greenhall, and I am a recently retired physician, medical doctor. I have a little bit more time now for community-related things, and that's really why I'm here. For the past six to 12 months, I've been seeing article after article about the difficulty of funding our schools. And I'm here today to just present my idea that I think we can have increased funding for schools without, I said "without," more tax increase. And I think the funding can come from, as I've written, this letter came on Mother's Day in the Reno Gazette Journal. I think the money can come from fines, not taxes, but fines on those employers that employ foreign nationals that have overstayed their visas. And I think there's quite a few such foreign nationals that have overstayed their visas. So, I think potentially, there's a lot of money that could be raised. And I'm here just to make a public awareness, and possibly, one of you, I don't know how this system works, I'm new to it, possibly, I can work with one of you and we can put something together. This title, the newspaper, put levy penalties on employers who hire illegal immigrants. That's not my real intention, my focus, I've written just below it, money for schools. And I think there'll be another benefit from that, namely, if we start to fine employers on maybe a daily basis, a small amount, maybe $10 or $15 a day per illegal that they have, and enforce that, just as we enforce building codes. If we can do that, I think we can raise a chunk of money, but also, we level the economic playing field vis-à-vis those employers who play by the system. They don't game the system, they play by the system, and they use E-Verify in order to identify who's here legally working and who's not here legally working. So, it would have two benefits. One, it could raise money for the school system, I think perhaps quite a bit, without a tax increase. And separately, it would motivate employers to hire legally. And like I say, if you want to open up the Reno Gazette Journal for Mother's Day, this is my presentation. And I do seek to work with any one of you that may have an interest in this. I don't know how this system works, and that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Greenhall. We appreciate you coming forward. Would you please give that to the Clerk for the record? Thank you. Next is Mr. Sam Diney.
Sam Diney Diney, the heart and soul and the body and mind, and I totally agree with Dr. Greenhall, who's walking down the hall right now. At any rate, nice smiley face over there. At any rate, I'm an Air Force Academy graduate. I'm the heart and soul and the body and the mind of Reno government. I've been coming to these meetings for 25 years. It sounds like I might have a new partner here, Dr. Greenhall, if he steps forward with his, with his initial proclamation up there of making the businesses pay, he says, not a penalty, a fine, a tax, whatever you call it, pay for these workers who are not supposed to be working here. At any rate, my, today, this right here is what they call the Open Meeting Law, and I've got much bigger sushi to fry, but these people violate the spirit of the Nevada Open Meeting Law all the time, but in the last couple of weeks, they've been doing it incessantly. Government cannot be buying for the people unless it exercises its powers under the scrutiny of the people. That's the first thing it says in the Open Meeting Law, that is the guidance for these meetings. And I, all this fallder all you just had was important. New employees, Highway Patrol, all those people, very important. But the citizens, the citizens who take their time off to come down here and not being paid should be the first ones on the, on the agenda, and that's the way it is throughout the state. So, that is wrong. Wrong, wrong, wrong. You do not like the citizens, apparently. At least you don't like Sam, and I know that's true. At any rate, that's enough on that. I may file an Open Meeting Law, because the spirit of the Open Meeting Law is as important as, as the open law itself. These folks had to sit here for 20 minutes each, and that's a lot of, that's just not right, and not right. At any rate, poaching, I've been talking about poaching lately. Poaching is when somebody from another territory comes into another person's territory and starts causing havoc. And what we have is this case of Tahoe Reno Industrial Complex poaching the Reno elections, and it's worse than that. They're using your own money, your money, Reno money, to poach your elections. Back in September of 2014, our state, your taxes gave the Tahoe Reno Industrial Complex $43 million, and then they built them a Nevada Parkway. It's not a high USA Parkway, it's the Nevada Parkway. You people paid for it, and now they're coming over here to Reno and poaching our elections. From, and I won't even go through all of the candidates who are being, who are joining in this poaching, apparently to become Tahoe Reno Industrial Complex, Story County puppets, puppets. So, whenever you look at anybody you're going to vote for, make sure they're not being poached, poached with your own taxes to become puppets for those people over there to tell you them what to do and waste more of your taxes.
Thank you, Mr. Diney.
What?
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you for welcoming me. No, thank you for thanking me, and you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Diney. We have no, seeing no, seeing no further public comment. We will close public comment and bring it back to the Board, and Mr. Manager.
Item seven, Commissioner, County Manager's announcements, reports, and updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything, Mr. Manager?
Not at this time.
Okay, I do have one, and before we go on to the other Commissioners, because I'm sure somebody has something, I have one thing I would like to say. Happy birthday to our County Manager, John Slaughter. Today is his birthday, and he is a great guy who's doing a wonderful job for us, and we appreciate all of your support, Mr. Manager. You're welcome. And with that, I will go to Commissioner Herman.
Happy birthday to John, for sure. I just have one small thing. We kind of neglected doing this. The Viya Conservation District has, just like other conservation districts, sometimes have assigned people to attend meetings when we can't get to them as Commissioners, when we have two or three other things to do at the same time. And my, my Viya Conservation District meets in Cedarville, so sometimes it just doesn't fit in. Takes a whole day to get there and get back. So, the little lady, Diane Hagglethorn, she assists me in that, and so I would like to make sure that that bookwork is taken care of to show her name as that site person. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Jung?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. I have a couple of announcements to make today. As you know, May is Older Americans Month, and we celebrate it quite heartily here in Washoe County, probably one of the most organized and largest older American months. We have activities every single day. One of those activities last week is I had got to do a meet and greet with the seniors at their congregate meal, which is here on Ninth Street, the other building across the way. And that was lovely. I had to race from there at the same time a meeting for a luncheon to honor a, it's called the Volunteer Remembrance Luncheon, and it's for seniors helping seniors, those seniors who we have lost over the last year because they have passed away. Also, I was on News Channel 8 with Pro Tem Mayor Ron Smith to hype the Stuff-A-Bus, which was a rousing success at the Aces Ball Field on Friday. It was a real wow, and we thank KOL News Channel 8, Chris Shiarlo, and his boss, Amber Howell, for letting him be deployed in such a way that we've received the most media attention, I think, ever. On Saturday, the Summit Church, which is off Pyramid Highway, but just over the hill from Sun Valley, they had approached me last winter, pre-2018, and wanted to adopt the Sun Valley community. And what they meant by "adopt" was they had already started inroads in doing a coat drive for the children through their church. Their church is huge, if you've seen it on the way, kind of by Walmart on Pyramid, a little further north on Pyramid Highway, on the west side of the highway. And they collected enough coats, they had, their first goal was elementary school. They were able to take it to the middle school, too, and they still had coats left over. And these are brand-new coats for the winter. So they wanted to, really felt the need and a calling to adopt Sun Valley. So we got together around the first of the year. Thank you, Suzie Valdesbean, she really did all the coordination. And we had Code, we had every trustee from the Sun Valley General Improvement District, which are other elected officials. We had Health, we had, you could, anybody you can think that could touch any resident, we had them in the room. And they planned this beautiful festival and fair on Saturday. The weather wasn't so great, but it was great, because they had 350 volunteers out there that cleaned that whole entire park. The sagebrush around the skate park was insurmountable, it looked like, and within an hour, they had it all gone and bagged up. They had free hamburgers and hot dogs and lunch. They had, Trucking Meadows Fire Protection District was there with one of their engines, the Sheriff's Office was there. It was a very carnival atmosphere, and they don't want to do it just once a year. They want to be involved with Sun Valley monthly because they found it so rewarding, and that Sun Valley GID specifically were able to identify the needs that needed to be met, rather than just go clean a ditch or clean a park. There was lots of repainting of graffiti, et cetera. So my deepest gratitude to Summit Church, if you see I'm wearing "I Love Sun Valley," they handed these out. And I also got an "I Heart Sun Valley" bracelet that they're handing out there to the participants. And we look forward to this partnership into the future. And then finally, Wednesday is the Library Board of Trustees meeting. Mr. Slaughter, do you plan, are you the liaison for that, the official liaison?
Yes.
Okay. I think I'm going to attend that, too, tomorrow, all right? And I, I'll be there, so if anybody else is going, just make sure that we don't have a quorum, let the manager know. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jung. I appreciate it. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, Mr. Manager, and who serves as our parks liaison? That's you. That's what I thought, Commissioner Jung. So I had a question from a constituent, you may have gotten it also. And they were concerned and questioned potentially having discounts for seniors at our camping facilities. So I'm wondering if we can, and I don't know the best way to deal with that. That's a, I truly believe that's a parks commission issue. They would take up that. I don't think we have anything to do with establishing or setting the fees. We may, we may ratify them, but I think that they set them. So possibly, looking at seniors and how we might be able to give them a senior discount when they're camping. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. I got that email also, so excellent. One thing I did forget is that Wednesday was the celebration of Reno's 150th birthday, and we had a big thing at, they had a big event at the Aces Baseball. And so Commissioner Lucy and I attended, and it was really quite delightful. There were lots of people there, very, very well-attended baseball game. And so that was nice to be able to represent the county at that event. I know, it doesn't. And then the other thing that happened was, this past week, is the, at the City of Reno, they received, the City of Reno and Flirty received one of 20 certificates from the federal government allowing them to be a drone practice, a drone, it's a pilot, thank you, that's the word I was looking for, a drone pilot program. And so there was a big introduction, and we were on live into DC, and DC was on live with us at the Reno City Chambers, and that was really great also. So it's, this is a very exciting time in the City of Reno, I think, and things are going quite well. Oh, well, the Lime Bike, I wasn't there, though. I unfortunately, Lime, so for those of you who want to go downtown and ride bikes, they got them now. And they're only a dollar an hour, so, so yeah, that's all downtown. And unfortunately, I was doing house construction, so I wasn't there, but it was fun. Anything else, commissioners? Mr. Manager? Okay, we will close seven and move on to donations.
Thank you, Madam Councilwoman, or I mean Chairwoman, sorry. I would like to direct the public's attentions to Items 8A1 to 8D. Item 8A1 is cash donations to senior services in the amount of $2,424.70. Also, item 8A2 is cash donations to senior services in the amount of $1,227.80. Item 8B, we are accepting military surplus equipment with an overall of estimated value of $12,000 with no charge to us. And this has been donated to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office to be utilized to support their honor guard of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office. So it's not tanks and machine guns and all the other things that we've been concerned about. Item 8C is $10,991.30 to Washoe County Regional Animal Services. And then finally, item 8D, the City of Sparks is donating us $5,000 to participate in a regional flood response action plan. And as always, I want to thank the generous citizens here of Washoe County. We cannot do it with everybody, without everybody pulling together.
Thank you very much, and that is so true. We have great citizens, great residents who live here. All right, we need a motion?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment? I don't see any on this. Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, good. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Please cast your vote on the screen, and then confirm your vote above. The motion passes four to nothing with Commissioner Lucy absent today. Mr. Manager? 9A proclamation?
Our next item are proclamations. The first is 9A. This is a proclamation proclaiming May 2018 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month. And I know that Commissioner Hartung will come down to read the proclamation, and I know Chief Summers is here to stand with Commissioner Hartung, so.
Thank you for coming. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners, wildfire is a constant threat regardless of the time of year. And we think that we're out of wildfire season, and yet it can constantly plague us. And we have, as citizens, a fiduciary responsibility to protect ourselves. And I understand this very well. I have a fairly large parcel, and in fact, I'm in the process of trying to find someone to clean out a section that is natural, because it will be an issue should a fire blow through. And the embers, it's not necessarily coming through a neighborhood, but the embers can spark additional fires. So we have this proclamation, "Whereas wildfire significantly impacts Nevada's environmental, economic, and social well-being; and whereas residents of Nevada's fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in a high-fire hazard area; and whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition; and whereas wildfires can occur, occur, occur," I can say this, "during any month; and whereas residents must stay continuously vigilant and prepared for wildfire throughout this year. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim 2018 as Nevada Wildfire Awareness Month, and supports this year's theme, Prepare Now, Wildfire Knows No Season, as a means for education and a call to action to the residents of Washoe County to take action now to reduce the wildfire threat and prepare their homes, families, and community for wildfire, and stay prepared throughout the year." Adopted this 15th day of May 2018, signed by the hand of our Chair, Marsha Burke Bigler. Would you like to say a word?
So on, Ryan Summers for the record, Fire Chief for North Lake Tahoe Fire. I believe I'll be up here for the next proclamation as well. So thank you for this one, and I'll save my comments till the end of the second one, if that's okay.
Commissioner Herman, I think you've...
Yes, next proclamation is Item 9B on today's agenda. This is a proclamation proclaiming June 2018 as Lake Tahoe Wildfire Awareness Month. And Chief Summers will come back down for this one as well.
This proclamation is, "Whereas wildfire significantly impacts the Lake Tahoe Basin's environmental, economic, and social well-being; and whereas residents of the Lake Tahoe Basin's fire-prone communities need to accept responsibility for living in high-fire hazard areas; and whereas residents must prepare to survive wildfire by ensuring proper management of vegetation surrounding the home and appropriate home construction and maintenance to resist ignition; and whereas wildfires can occur during any month; and whereas residents must stay continuously vigilant and prepared for wildfire throughout the year; and whereas partners on the Tahoe Fire and Fuels Team, including all the local fire protection districts, counties, and cities at Lake Tahoe, are asking people to prepare now, wildfires know no reason, season, I'm sorry. And now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim June 2018 as Lake Tahoe Wildfire Awareness Month, as a means for education and a call to action to the residents of Lake Tahoe Basin to take action now to reduce the wildfire threat and prepare their homes, their families, and community for wildfire, and stay prepared throughout the year. Adopted this 15th day of May 2018, and it's signed by Chair Burke Bigler."
Well, good morning. Ryan Summers again for the record. I prepared for this one. I did not prepare for the State of Nevada. Living with Fire, I'd like to apologize. They could not make that presentation. They had a family emergency. But with that, thank you on behalf of not only the citizens of Washoe County, but the entire Tahoe Basin, and Living with Fire, and the State of Nevada now. As I've stated before, wildfires know no boundaries. So when it comes to requesting funding for fuels and completing the work, and then educating the public, we take that same approach. So it's nice to see the commission as a whole is able to make these proclamations across these boundaries to encompass the entire state and the Tahoe Basin. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. And thanks for all you do. You guys have a great team up there.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is Item 9C on the agenda. This is a proclamation proclaiming May 20 through 26, 2018, as National Public Works Week. And I would invite all of our staff who's here, public works staff who are here, to come on down for this item.
Mr. Crump, hello. Nice to see you.
While they are filling back behind me, Madam Chairwoman, I will start reading the proclamation, and then we'll get a photograph.
Okay, all right.
Whereas Washoe County Community Services Department is an integral part of the community and has been providing public works to the benefit of the community and residents since June 15, 1967. And whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Washoe County. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees from state and local government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civil leaders, and children in Washoe County to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the American Public Works Association has celebrated the annual National Public Works Week since 1960. And now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May 20 through the 26, 2018, as National Public Works Week, and urges all of our people to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they made to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life, and signed by our fair Chairwoman, Marsha Burke Bigler. Mr. Crump, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, and for the record, Eric Crump with Washoe County's Community Services. First, I want to thank this commission for their proclamation in support of public works within Washoe County. I think we all recognize the importance and the criticality public works plays for our community. I also want to thank our public works team. Most of our team is out today doing what they do best, and that's serving our community. But we do have representatives from this public works team. They're in the capacity of Washoe County Roads, Facility Management Equipment Services, our capital projects, engineering, and our utilities. I'm truly proud and honored to be part of this team. They're an awesome team, and they serve tirelessly, oftentimes in some of the harshest conditions and times when we're in bed, and they're out there doing what they do best, serving our community. So thank you to our team.
Thank you. Thank you.
Try to scoot in a little bit, guys. All right. Everybody look right here. Here we go. Three, two.
Thank you so much, guys. For your hard work, dedication, that's why I always.
Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate you, be safe out there.
I know, I know.
Whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. Always great to see these proclamations in our team. I need a motion to approve the proclamations. I have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on these issues, Madam Clerk?
No ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And please cast your vote on the screen and then affirm your vote above. Motion carries four to nothing with Commissioner Lucy absent today. Alrighty.
Madam Chair, next item is your consent agenda. This is 10A1 through 10B. And if I could, perhaps if we could take each of these individually, you could, you could take the vote on these as one, but I think it's worthy of acknowledging all of these individually.
Yeah, because we do have staff here who receive these awards and these certificates and so we want to recognize what a great job and what a good team we have.
Absolutely. So 10A1 is acknowledging receipt of the 36th consecutive annual certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for the county's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2017. And we have our wonderful comptroller staff, our comptrollers here with all of our comptroller staff. So if they could come down and be recognized, that would be wonderful.
Come on down, guys. Thank you very much for being here and thank you for the good work you do so that we get this award here at the county.
Say something?
Yes, I just, I have always given the opportunity when I present the CAFRA each year and looking at CSD and the Rhodes Crew, I've had the opportunity to work with each of the departments in Washoe County. I think Washoe County has amazing staff, amazing personnel, but I will hands down say I have the best team in Washoe County and I know there's going to be a lot of emails on that now, but I'll defend it all, but we do have a great team and Washoe County as a whole has a great team. So thank you very much for recognizing this team particularly.
Thank you, thank all of you and especially thank our comptroller who's quite delightful and fun to work with. Thank all of you. Do we want to do a picture?
Yeah.
We can do one.
Looks like David Mosher's wife.
Come on.
I know.
All right, everybody look right here, here we go. In three, two.
Josh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager?
If it's okay, I'll just stay here for this next one. This is 10A2 and this is acknowledging receipt of the distinguished budget presentation award for fiscal year 2017, 2018 from the Government Finance Officers Association. And if our budget staff could please come down, I know they're here. And this is the 16th time this award has been awarded to Washoe County.
Wow, that's great.
Good afternoon for the rec, or morning, goodness. I'm going to hit it myself there. Lori Cook, Budget Manager, I just want to thank my staff for the work on budget. We have a new staff member, so I'm going to introduce her right now, Patsy Buxton. So we just stole her from Health, just started. So we like to start people their first week, "Look at the awards you get, it's so great to be here." And then, no, just kidding, it's always great. And I'll, you know, see Kathy's best staff and raise her a little bit on the poker stakes here because I have excellent, excellent staff. But I can't out-sing Kathy, so if we have that kind of a throat, then I'm going to lose.
Lori, you're a good yourself.
Budget Manager, sorry, Lori Cook. I'm going to. So we have John Bazanich, Kari Estrada, Patsy Buxton, and Val Gilmore.
Yay.
All right.
When we get our exercise tied up, we can accept it.
So appreciate you.
What are we going to do, the health? That you're stealing everybody's for health.
I like it when people steal.
Yeah, regular.
Oh, yeah, I appreciate you.
All right, here we go.
And three, two.
Thank you, guys.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Well, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Today also a donation that made it, not in donations, but in consent, but is very important that we highlight it, that Robert Z. Hawkins Foundation grant, item 10B as in boy, in the amount of $52,394.76, no county match. The grant period was May 15 through completion of the sound system upgrades for the Robert Z. Hawkins Amphitheater, my favorite place to see a concert. And we thank you, Hawkins Foundation. We have been partners for decades and whenever we need something that we know is above base, what we have, they generally always give us what we need. So I want to thank them and that's in the Chairwoman's district, Commission District Two.
Thank you very much. Actually, that is in Commissioner Lucy's. Commission District Two is Commissioner Lucy's. I'm one. It's okay.
That's in Chairman, or Commissioner Lucy's district.
I, I claim it because it's close.
It kind of feels like yours.
It's right across the street.
I know, okay. Thank you, Robert Z. Hawkins Foundation.
Good, okay. Thank you very much. I need a, an emotion for approving the consent agenda. Is there any public comment?
No ma'am.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Please cast your vote on the screen. Oh, it's up there already. Oh, that's right, this is consent. Motion carries four to, to nothing with Commissioner Lucy absent. And that's the end of the consent agenda. Mr. Manager?
Next item scheduled is item 11. This is for the possible closed session. We don't, don't need this today so that we can remove that from today's agenda.
Okay.
Takes us to item 12, which is public comment.
All right. I have a final public comment from Ms. Catherine Snedeker.
Again, Catherine Snedeker, for the woman, for the record, I'm a non-person, non-resident, unenfranchised, natural woman, human being. You know, you really should read the statutes and what your authority is. Are you aware of how code enforcement hearings are supposed to be managed, set out by the state guidelines? Probably not. There's supposed to be a hearing in front of you if there's a zoning violation problem. Not a misdemeanor citation issued by some code enforcement officer that has no authority to issue a citation. Because if you look in NRS 44, in case you're not informed on that, that's about what counties can and cannot do. And they cannot issue misdemeanor citations for a zoning violation, a code enforcement violation. You have no authority to do that. The statutes do not give you that authority and we all know counties can't make law. That's why you have codes, because you can't make law. But you have, fraudulently. You've conspired against the people and committed fraud and racketeering on the people for issuing misdemeanor citation when you have no authority. And nobody has ever shown me the authority that you have to do, issue a citation. Therefore, I'm right. And you're committing fraud against everybody in this county and you have been for years. When you do that, you act outside your authority. You violate your oath of office, you violate the Constitution, and most importantly, you violate the public trust of which you are all trustees of. You have abandoned your governmental affairs and the affairs of the people in favor of your benefactors that bribe you all the time because pay-to-play, which is what you guys said yourself is what you do, has now been defined by the US government because of Hillary as bribery, here in simple. I think you should do some reading, understand what your jobs are, understand what your restrictions are, and start following the laws that you expect me to follow. You're not exempt. And now I'll leave.
Thank you, Snedeker. See no more public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager?
I'm sorry. Last item is item 13, which is Commissioner County Manager's Announcements, Reports, Updates, Requests for Information or Topics for Future Agendas.
Do you have anything?
I have nothing.
Commissioners, see no additional comments, we are adjourned.